And I'd like to call to order and welcome everyone to this March fifteenth. Wenham Select Board Meeting. As a reminder, for someone who may not possibly know this, this is a virtual Zoom meeting. It's being recorded. All of the votes that we take will be roll call votes and we will take, to start off real quick, we will take a roll call attendance. So Diane, are you present?
Gary Cheeseman's here.
Catherine Harrison here. So we'll begin as we do. I'll mention upfront that we have a few short things on our agenda and then we will not break, but we will continue. Insert a public hearing in the middle of this meeting having to do with the renewal of the Verizon license. If you follow along, folks at home, follow along with the agenda, they'll see that. We will start as always with public input for items that are not on the agenda. If you have, anyone has something they would like to say, share, speak about, I always try to take, take a little long, few minutes, a few seconds to make this introduction, to give people time to put their name in the chat if they have something to say. Because by now, I don't see anyone in the chat. Does anyone else? If not, I will move on. So we have a few announcements this evening. And as always, Tom, if you would be willing, it'd be great if you would take us through the announcements.
Thank you. First announcement for all the residents, a warrant hearing will be conducted on Monday, March twenty eighth at seven o'clock via Zoom. If you're intending on going to town meeting that Saturday, this is a good place to learn about all the articles and the discussions with the various departments and boards. Next, on April seventh, Thursday from seven AM, eight PM, you are invited to go to our annual town election and vote for the candidates of your choice. There are a number of boards and committee memberships are on the election ballot, so please come through, come to there, rain or shine.
Okay, and before we move on to the reports, one thing that we missed, what you spoke about, the, the, the star event, our annual town meeting is April second, the Saturday after the warrant hearing at one o'clock at the Bukeur School. I had an opportunity to talk to some folks last night who were somewhat unfamiliar with town meeting. So I was trying to convince them that, you know, just a few hours, it's how we, we make all our decisions in town and there's babysitting maybe, hopefully, and they should come. So anyway, we'll move on to the town administrators update, Tom.
Thank you. A number of items here. The first item, and I wasn't aware of this until I received an email today. Harriet may be aware of that. See, she's on the screen. Apparently last year is amendment to the general laws regarding CPA funds where they've now included that you can use funds to acquire real property that was held for real purposes if you wanted to conduct a town rail trail. I know in my community, which doesn't have CPA, that would have been an interesting use of funds that they are looking at doing a rail trail, but just received an email on that today from the Division of Local Services. So that was interesting and I passed that on to the CPA Committee today also. Next, and this will be for a future meeting. Apparently, our community, for whatever particular reason, did not sign on to the opioid settlement that was going on nationally that KP Law was working on with the various communities. We do have the option to join as a late member of the settlement agreement. That may be something I'll discuss with the chair during our scheduling meetings and whether we should be bringing this back to the board to see if you wish to become a signatory party to the settlement agreement. Next, and I keep always saying that there's money out there and I do appreciate our department heads looking into this. Mr. Souza will be looking into a program now that's called Federal Funding Program called Raze. It's basically for Public Works, additional funding for Public Works projects with applications due on April fourteenth. Now, there's generally four items that it can be going toward. Road and bridge repair, rail to trail projects, if we're doing anything like that in the upcoming future, revitalization projects in bicycle paths. So Rich will be looking at that and getting back to us if he thinks we have anything that we may be able to apply for those funds. Next, which is also funding, but it's more of an indirect funding. The US House of Representatives approved a spending package that included fundings for various North Shore programs. There's three of them that indirectly impact Wenham for the better. One was that there was a million dollars for North Shore Community Health to expand the primary care, dental, mental health, and urgent care facilities in Salem, Peabody, and Gloucester. Thirteen thousand residents in the North Shore area utilize those services. So if anybody in Wenham utilizes that, there'll be more funding going toward it. Next, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going toward the Essex County Sheriff Department Star Program. That's a treatment and rehabilitation program for incarcerated individuals with the goal of reducing recidivism and providing tools for individuals to become productive members of society. The final one, which was almost eight hundred thousand dollars for open door to expand the North Shore hunger network and build a new commercial kitchen and food pantry to increase capacity and to prepare and distribute healthy foods in northeastern Essex County. Couple of items that are more on the local level. Chief DeNapley and I went up to Pleasant Pond today to take a look at seeing how the shape of it was. It looked in good shape. You had a couple of fishermen up there. It was a good day. So they're up there. I didn't see them having any luck yet, but they were fishing. And the chief and our town clerk will be getting together shortly to put together the permitting program going forth for the summer season. And I believe that's it for now. Thank you.
Question, Tom. This is also for a future meeting and it's relative to Pleasant Pond. I don't know. I guess the pond was open, the beach was open last year. Trying to remember. Think it was, right? I'd be, I'd be interested in getting some historical data on how we're doing with the number of stickers that we've sold. You know, we, for a while, we were sharing the cost with Hamilton and we're no longer doing that. So I'd just be interested to, to know how many people are buying stickers. Maybe someday that's.
I'll make a note of that. I wasn't here last summer, so I don't know what the day-to-day activity level was up there, but we can get the information.
Feel like it might have been a popular spot because people could be outdoors and close to home. So that was my question. I don't really have anything for the chairs report. This is actually probably something I'm going to talk, just report on next week. We do have on Thursday, I guess, the last of the year's quintuple chairs meeting. And it's basically, I understand the, the topic is basically to talk about anything that's going on at any of our annual town meetings. I'm guessing relative to the schools that we want to bring up. If the board has anything they would like me to bring up relative to, you know, the schools that we haven't already talked about, I'm happy to do that. You can tell me now or let me know. There is also, I believe, we've invited and, and we'll have representation from the school district at our warrant hearing and of course at annual town meeting, but at the warrant hearing. So if folks have questions about the school budget, in addition to our budgets and et cetera, they'll be at the warrant hearing. Planning is continuing for the logistics for the annual town meeting. I think we're still trying to get together with the Board of Health to just make sure we're on the same page relative to mitigation, since we have been given by this consortium that we belong to, a bunch of masks. If, be interested to know if the board is interested in having masks, KN ninety-five masks or K ninety-five masks available at town meeting. I'm presuming that the Board of Health is not going to require masks for the town meeting, but if we had them available for any residents that wish to wear one, I think that seems like that, since we have them, it would be something that might be worthwhile. And there has been some discussion about the potential for having a separate area, either within the room or somewhere that will accommodate folks that are still not completely comfortable being in a large-ish, hopefully, group without masks. And so we'd have a separate area for folks that are more comfortable with masks to be able to at least sit surrounded by other people with masks. So those are some of the town meeting mitigation things that are coming up. I think we're still trying to have a town, a, a meeting with the Board of Health. Is that true, Tom? Do you heard anything? I know Dr. Ting was away, but not sure if he's back. So we can get more information on that. And I believe last weekend, the dissemination of the COVID test kits that we received have, has started. So a few people, a few folks in town, we're finalizing the plans for how that will be more formally done. But a few folks in town were able to take advantage of some free test kits that we again also got through this consortium that we belong to. That's all I have for the chairs report. We have three minutes until our public hearing is scheduled to begin and I assume Attorney Solomon, if he's now already here, is coming. Yes, I think he's already here. So if Gary or Diane, if you have a couple of minutes or something that you'd like to say, that we have time to do that and then we'll, we'll move into the public hearing.
About a quick announcement as to how people will, will receive their warrant hearing books and town report books.
Yes. So I'm gonna need Tom to say, so the warrant books are at the printer. I think they're all at the printer and the warrant books are intended to be mailed to residents in time for the Friday before the warrant hearing. I think that's the twenty fifth of March. So folks will have those by mail. And honestly, I know that we will follow the same process with the annual reports in that we put them online and print a relatively small number for folks who want them, they can pick them up at Town Hall if they want the actual in-print version. But Tom, do you know that, or maybe Michelle, if she's back there somewhere, do you know the date of when those annual reports will actually be available to put online? I'm not exactly sure of that. Oh, there's Michelle. Thank you. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I think we have said three eighteen that it would be online.
Okay. Okay, so soon. So everyone should have, no Boy Scout delivery this year, but you should be getting your warrant book in the mail. And we'll bring a few to the town meeting as well in case folks forgot, but we've requested on the postcard that we should be getting soon. That you, please, everyone, please bring their warrant book to town meeting because it's much easier if everyone has their own. If not, if there's nothing else right now, that was, that was a good one, Gary. Thank you for reminding that. We do have a public hearing, which is regarding the renewal of our Verizon license. The town of Wenham's renewal of the Verizon license. Attorney Solomon's been working on this for a while. We met with him, I can't remember, a while ago to get this started. And I don't know, Tom, do you have anything that you'd like to say to introduce this or shall we just?
No, I can introduce. I've worked with Bill a number of years. Over the years, he's probably one of the most esteemed cable attorneys in Massachusetts. And he is bringing forth your renewal license for Verizon, which he has been working for, working on over the past fiscal year. And I wish to turn that over to Attorney Solomon for his presentation.
Thank you. And not to interrupt you, but I suppose that we ought to officially open this hearing as of six forty-five PM on the fifteenth of March. I don't think we have to vote to open and I know we'll vote to close it, but thank you, Bill, for joining us.
Thank you, Chairperson Harrison. It's, it's good to be here. It's good to be here for tonight's hearing and, and, and vote. Again, Bill Solomon, town's special counsel for the cable license renewal with Verizon. I should also say, and I'll introduce him, we have Attorney John Harrington, counsel for Verizon here. And he was, I asked him if he'd come and say a few words and he was more than happy to. So John's here, welcome John and, and if it's okay, I'm Chair Attorney John at the end, just to, to say a few words about the license. Everyone has the summary, I believe. It's, the license with Verizon is a five-year license. As a, in fact, three-year unilateral termination for Verizon, but Attorney Harrington will discuss that as I'll say a few words. It's not to redo the deal if, for a better deal, but if in the event that Verizon were to exit cable, the business of cable service, the provision of cable service, then they'd have an option to, 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 to terminate the license. But Verizon, represented by Attorney Harrington and Verizon generally, really came to the table on that issue. They are looking for flexibility. I don't think they're, they made any decisions at this point as to when and what they'll be doing at any particular time. But they, we were able to achieve the payment of the public educational and government access capital payments all within three years. So five years of payments are made in a three-year period. So in the, what I think is unlikely that, that within that five years Verizon would seek to move past the provision of cable service that we would have all the PEG access capital payment made, made to the town. It's a five-year license. Beginning of the memorandum, I, I show some of the subscriber numbers, you know, Wenham. Its strength is that it does so much with, with a small population, but it has a relatively small subscriber base for companies. The end of two thousand twenty, the new number just came out a day or two ago, Verizon had five hundred and twenty-eight cable subscribers. Comcast had six hundred and sixty-two. The PEG access and this board is very familiar with it. I'll just call it community programming. Never has community programming been more important and understood to be so important as during and now hopefully after the primary COVID nineteen pandemic and challenge. That the connectedness of community groups to the public, of the town, to the public and the public of the town would not have occurred without Hamilton Wenham Community Television through both the PEG access channels and very much the streaming of meetings and other events. Someone said in another community, for a period of time, five months, six months, eight months, a year, democracy would have died in cities, in towns if it wasn't for your ability to communicate through streaming and other methods. And as you know, Hamilton Wenham Television was instrumental in working with the town and the town with them to, to, to make that doable. And so the PEG operating support for this community programming, done together with Hamilton, is at five percent of cable companies and its affiliates' gross revenues. That five percent is continuation of what the town has successfully done for years. And it is a, it's the maximum, and I should double check that, but it's maximum allowed under the Cable Act. And that's important. The PEG capital is reflective of the PEG capital was negotiated together with the town of Hamilton and is equivalent to the funding provided to Hamilton based on a per subscriber basis. And so that was something that was more or less set. But what was critical what was critical over the last year, particularly the last six months, is that different practitioners have different views of cable license provisions. Verizon is most interested in the cable license policy and legal terms. In fact, the financial terms are not even generally discussed until the legal and policy documents done. And it's within those provisions that a town can ensure that it gets the benefits it believes it's bargaining for. And so that is a section by section, sentence by sentence, back and forth with the cable company through its representative, Attorney Harrington. No one better for his, his client or in his field. And, and that's what we've worked on together in a way that I believe serves both parties, but most importantly serves the interest of, of, of the town of Wenham. Strong legal provisions. I'm just going to give you one example of that and move on. With respect to some other large issues in, in, in community programming, one is the electronic programming guide. As you know, that's how people find out what's on cable and how they can schedule reporting it. PEG access is not on the electronic program guide to date in Massachusetts. It's one of the important issues that access ports and towns have addressed. And in Wenham, we have a strong electronic program guide provision that is based upon whether or not Verizon moves ahead in that area. So if they don't move ahead, then we cannot compel them to move ahead. But what Wenham was able to achieve in this license is the requirement, not only that Verizon come to the town if they provide this anywhere else in the Commonwealth and discuss the technical and, and financial feasibility, but also discuss providing it. Because we're not MIT, we're not debating the science or the finance. We want to know if it's provided somewhere else. We'd like it provided in Wenham. And you have, really should give us a good reason if you're not going to do that. The same thing with PEG access, video on demand. Video demand is on the internet now, but there are folks who get their TV through what this license deals with. Cable television and the same thing there. If provided anywhere else in the Commonwealth by Verizon. They not only have to come and discuss the technology and the economic feasibility, they have to discuss providing it here. And that's an important upgrade to the license that may make a difference going forward. If I can, just to provide one quick summary, and I don't know if I can put some, something here on the screen. Maybe not, but let me just go over one issue that gives, is one of, I'd say about eighteen to twenty-two issues that have been negotiated over the last year where the town was able to convince Verizon that its needs and interests were such that, that its language had to in some fashion be agreed upon. And that's this issue of gross revenues. With the five percent of gross revenues that are paid by Verizon to, to the town, the question is, well, five percent of what? And in the cable world, as you know, that folks generally now don't just get cable service. They often generally buy internet service and often telephone service from the cable provider. So the question becomes, all right, here's a bundle of services and the cost is a hundred and twenty dollars. What portion of that, that bill, that payment, that revenue, we'll term it revenue, what portion of that revenue is cable service? Because the town is only paid five percent of the cable service revenue, not the telephone revenue, not the internet revenue. Now, traditionally, in, in a line of licenses, a, a company would want to say that, that the cable revenue portion of the bundle are the revenues as kept on the books of the company. So as that company keeps its books, subject yes to any applicable law or regulation, but there is no applicable law or regulation. So that therefore, in that hundred and twenty-dollar bill, the company keeps its books one way or another way, that will tremendously impact what five percent of those revenues are. Hamilton made it, I'm sorry, Wenham, Wenham made it clear that regardless of what other communities agreed to language that said, well, it's up to how a company keeps its books, that there had to be a more objective standard. And that objective standard is under GAAP on, on generally, general accounting principles. And which about five years ago, came up with a ruling for bundling for all accounting purposes that says you look at the underlying cost of the service in order to figure out what portion of the bundle is any particular service or good. And so that is but one example of where the, the, the work that's been done together with Wenham here has achieved a license that will allow the town to derive the benefits that it bargained for without surprises and without hopefully unnecessary litigation. And I'd like to thank Verizon and like to thank Attorney Harrington for continuing to understand the importance of that and many other issues to the town that the town was prepared and did agree to many overview issues that Verizon sought to achieve and has achieved before. And those were fine, but the town had its needs and interests and Verizon, Attorney Harrington, were able to negotiate that in a way that worked for all parties. One final comment, I know you have a lot of other business. Something I was just thinking about and wrote about today, that regardless of where Verizon goes in the future and, and, and all companies have to make decisions about where they go with different technologies. What I, what I do know is that Verizon has been an excellent cable company, an excellent addition to community programming, addition, providing an alternative to residents of, of, of so many towns in the Commonwealth. And what that has done is that has allowed the public to understand Verizon as a excellent technology company, a company that provides services. It's no longer to people think of the telephone company and they go, oh my God, it's, you know, something that doesn't work or they don't answer the phone or, you know, it's like the horse and bug. So I think it's something that Verizon may not itself appreciate because it has its, its views and its attorneys and its finance people who are looking to go this direction and that direction. That from the entry of Verizon to providing cables, cable in Wenham and other towns, it's benefited the communities tremendously, but it's also benefited itself with respect to people's understanding of a company in the year twenty twenty-two. And I think that's a win-win situation that was continued here. And I thank the board for giving me the opportunity and the time to negotiate those final issues, which I think have brought a really strong license that I'm proud to endorse and recommend to the board.
Great. Thank you for that.
Attorney Harrington, if he could, if he's, I think he's here, if he could speak just briefly on the termination.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I appreciate your summary of the rigorous negotiations that we went through. And I do think it's a very fair deal. If I can just talk about the termination, it's not something that is anticipated by any means, but given the uncertainty of both the, the technology and the, the competition that's now going on in the industry. It's just something that Verizon has deemed very important to protect their own business interests. So there was no intent to terminate this agreement and the financial PEG grant is protected because there is no way to terminate this unilaterally without paying the full PEG support that's provided for in the agreement. There is one other aspect that's in the agreement that I think is a benefit to Wenham. And that is that you will be receiving an additional PEG channel, which will be in high definition. So that would be upon notice from Wenham that they wanted that and they would provide us with two hundred and seventy days to get it up and running, but it is in the agreement and is a requirement. But I would like to thank the town and Attorney Solomon for the consideration and being flexible and meeting our needs as we go forward in this uncertain area.
And, and, thank you, John. I, Verizon's been excellent in its timing on a high definition, two hundred and seventy days. So much so that I forgot to mention it. So thank you, John. That's, that's, that's one of the more critical parts of this license. And it's, it's, it's a step forward. Verizon will be the, the first cable provider, but hopefully not the last, that provides a high-definition channel. that provides a high definition channel, uh, in addition to its, its, uh, standard definition channels.
Thank you both for that. Um, we will, uh, we'll take any public comment that there is. But first, are there any questions or comments from the select board for either attorney Sullivan, Solomon or Harrington?
No questions here. I know it's been a long and, uh, process, but glad to see that we have a, a good agreement here.
Yep.
I agree. I have no questions.
Okay. Um, so is there anyone that's on the call from the public who would like to make any comments or say anything about this, um, renewal? This being a public hearing after all? And if you would like to say something, if you put your name in the chat. I think that's the easiest way for us to see that. And, um, I will echo my colleagues while we're waiting, if there is anyone. Um, comments that is a lot of, I know that there's a lot of hard work that goes into this and I appreciate the, um, the effort and the attention to the details that are in the best interest of Wyndham. For a little town, but we do appreciate the time that was spent to getting us the best, um, agreement that we could with, with Verizon.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Madame Chair, I just wanted to say that I think Bill from HW Cam is here. None of this, none of the capital planning or none of the work, the real work that gets done would happen without HW Cam. I don't know, uh, the staff, other than I know the, the work that Bill did to provide, provide the foundation for the capital plan and the capital grant and the work he does, you know, week to week, day to day. And I want to, I want to thank him for his work, uh, in making this license possible.
Yeah, we, we should all thank Bill, well, Bill and his crew, um, for all of the work that he does with HW Cam. Um, I, I didn't realize he was on the call.
Well, I could be wrong. I just started.
You know, it's hard to see, but usually, you know, if you're here, Bill, and you'd like to make any comments about this, um, you know, please, please feel free. But he does a, a great job with, um, you know, not a huge staff, um, but he uses the money that he gets wisely and he, he does a lot. Uh, HW Cam does a lot for the towns. So I haven't seen anyone else. Um, and if no one else has any comments or questions, I think we can, um, take a motion and a vote. And then we'll close the hearing.
All right. Move that the Wyndham Select Board approved the cable television renewal license with Verizon New England Incorporated, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two for five years commencing on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two and expiring at midnight on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
So any further discussion on this? If not, we will proceed to a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Catherine? Yes. So again, thanks very much. Um, we'll have approval of this. We'll get you any signatures that you may need on any documents.
And thank you. And I think, I think Verizon, I think we want three originals, John. You want three as opposed to two?
Uh, we, we're going with the, um, the virtual signature anyway.
Virtual, okay.
So I'll, I'll give that to you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you all. And I'll sign it too. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for the board, um, I guess we actually should have done this before we voted, but there were no real comments anyway. But I will, uh, take a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to, uh, close the public hearing on the renewal of Verizon license for the town of Wyndham.
Second.
All in favor? Diane?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes? Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we're done with that. We thank that everyone who put time in, uh, those contracts.
Thank you both. Bye, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Bye bye. Thanks again. Look forward to being there again.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on, on our agenda. The next item, um, is really just a minutes, um, agenda. So.
A consent agenda.
It is a consent agenda, but it has one set of minutes. So. There it is.
I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes for March first, twenty twenty-two.
Just a quick question. Can we go back on noted on minutes that a lot of the numbers that were tentative have not been filled in on articles one and three? Will they be backdated in?
Well, I should, this is Catherine Tinsley and I have this conversation a lot. If we did not have the numbers when we were at the meeting, and so we did not talk about those specific numbers at the meeting, then I don't think they should be in the, in the minutes. Um, and I.
There's a lot of XXXX. So.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. They'll, they'll, they'll be there eventually. I just don't think we can go back. Um, any further discussion? Not we'll vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Catherine? Yes. So unanimous on the minutes. Um, okay, new business. So this evening we have, I guess this is actually old business, but this part of it is new business. The cemetery commission, um, folks are here to give us an update regarding something that we've heard about. A plan of sale for cemetery lots. Uh, the time that they presented that to us, they said that they would come back and give us a little more detail and some timing. And I think, Tom, is there anything more I need to say on that before we introduce whoever is making this presentation?
Yeah, it's, uh, Bill Wilson. I'll be starting the presentation anyways.
Okay. Um, okay. Well, I guess we're ready to go.
Yeah, we're back again. We met in November and we said we would come back one more time after the rules and regulations. Um, we're starting to roll out the sale of the Main Street Cemetery lots, which are highly sought after. And, uh, as you remember from the rules and regulations, we had a plan to do it, but we wanted to come back one more time to do the communication and rollout plan, uh, going forward here before we do it. Next turn.
Great.
To say that, uh, the, the team, Harriet Davis, Olivia Shublin and myself been working pretty hard on the stuff there and the rules and regulations. And, uh, as I said, it's a follow-up from our fifteen November meeting that everybody was in agreement on the rules and regulations. Most of the changes that there were nominal, except for the sale of lots, section fourteen, which was all brand new, uh, new territory. But it had a pretty detailed plan for selling lots located in Main Street Cemetery, uh, that we discovered, mostly discovered, but, uh, also on a buyback basis. So we're back here just to tell you one more time, we're moving out on this thing. Next turn. So what's for sale? So the available lots there, um, this is back in twenty twenty that we went through and did a review of initially R six, which is right at the, the, the base of, uh, Lake Avenue. Uh, shown in the, the right-hand panel there, you can kind of see the areas there, but there are uh, eight cremation lots not sold there, uh, plus a few other ones in R six. And then there are three full burial plots. So, you know, you got sixteen lots who are going to be coming out for sale. Uh, we took this seriously and we, we, um, got on board with the town clerk to verify DPW administrator and the burial agent at that time to verify that these were indeed pre-unencumbered. And we can move forward with that. And you can see that in the left-hand side that, uh, we did our due diligence there. Next chart. This is in the other rules and regulations. This is point categories that people in the town of Wyndham that want to, uh, apply for these lots here will be awarded points based on certain categories that they're in. And it looks like a part of it got touched up down there in veterans, but that's in the rules and regulations that are online. And we're going to be starting this process in, in May of twenty twenty-two. Olivia Shublin, who's with us here tonight, um, will kind of go through the details of the rollout plan, uh, going forward. Olivia there?
Yep, I'm here. Hi, everybody.
Next chart.
Hi, Olivia.
Hi. Um, so really what we wanted to show you tonight was kind of the pre-sale, the sale and the post-sale kind of communication plan that we've created, um, just so that we can garner awareness. We give everybody and, um, communicate to as many residents as we possibly can that this is an opportunity, um, for them to apply if they are so interested um, in purchasing a, one of these lots, um, at Main Street Cemetery. Um, so this evening, obviously we're presenting this plan to you so that you are aware. Um, between now and May first, when the application process is open, um, we are going to be going through a pre-sale communication, um, program, which I'll kind of talk through a little bit more, um, in the next few slides. Um, the application process, based on our rules and regulations, is open for fifteen business days. So that puts us from May first through, um, May twentieth essentially is when the application process will close. Um, and then after that, we will meet, review the applications. And then really July first is when everything will be finalized. Um, June eighth through tenth is when we will alert those that, um, based on the point system will have been selected for those, for those lots. Um, if you can actually go to the next slide, please, I will kind of talk about the application, um, process. And per what Bill was saying, um, that process has been highlighted in our rules and regulations. Um, but the submission process is going to be twofold. You'll be able to, residents will be able to digitally submit their applications or through hard copies to the town. Um, and if you actually go to the next slide, um, we've correct, we've created the actual application, which is pretty straightforward, um, first name, last name, just general information. And then they fill out that point system based on, um, what fits and suits them. Um, we are asking for supporting documentation because we are going to have to verify that everything is accurate. Um, as well as just signing and letting people know that this application process, uh, you might submit it, but you not, might not get selected. So we just want people to be aware that, uh, the application does not guarantee that you will get a slot because obviously there are not that many. Um, and then if you can go to the next slide, this is really what I wanted to highlight specifically was, um, the pre-sales communication, I think is going to be very important, um, here, especially just letting people know that this is an opportunity for, um, those that are interested to apply. Um, in doing so, we really thought long and hard about ways that we could do outreach to the community in a multi, multitude of ways. Um, so that includes having a digital copy available. Um, I'll be working with Trudy to get that posted onto our website, have it highlighted within the news. Um, posting it on social media and directing people to the locations that they can actually download and access that, um, those applications. And then also just working with, um, some of the other groups and boards, um, within our town to let them know that this is something that they can be, um, announcing to their members. Um, and I think also really focusing on the council of aging and providing hard copies and, um, distributing them that way. Then during the application window, just making sure that we're sending out reminders um, because there is just a short period of time that people can apply, making sure that those applications are, um, sent in and submitted in, in time. And then really the last part of this is the post-sale. Um, so we will be selecting individuals or, or families based on the applications that we receive, um, and, um, being able to submit, send them, um, via email and letters that they've been selected. I think it's also really important that those that have spent time submitting these, um, do know that there is a waitlist and they get, uh, communication out that way. And then just wrapping it up and making sure that all those that helped in this process are thanked. So. Um, that is the process that we've established. We'd love to kind of hear if you have any questions or, um, feedback on, on this process for us. Um, obviously this sale of lots has never really happened, uh, in a very long time. So, um, we'd love to hear any feedback on your end.
Okay, Gary or Diane, anything that you'd like to? Feedback?
Very thorough process. So I hope people apply.
Me too. I think they'll apply. I think this is great. You guys put such a nice thing together. It's very neat and organized. I appreciate that. I think it's, it's a great idea. Great job.
All right. Thank you very much.
Um, and I, oh.
I was just saying that we did have a question in the.
Nope.
Oh. Okay.
So I saw one, I saw the question, what are the costs for the lots? If you go to the rules and regulations, which are on the website under the cemetery commission, it has the process and also the price, uh, for the, uh, for the lots here. So you can go that as a reference point.
Yep. And in those pre-communications that we'll be, um, putting out on the website and things like that, it'll direct to the rules and regulations, but we'll make sure that social media posts and things like that have that information. So it's easy to, for people to access.
So this is, you know, obviously a great job. We really appreciate the work that's been done here. Um, you know, we want, it's, it, I'm pretty sure there will be applicants. I feel, I feel like there may be more applicants than there are lots at this point. Um, but you've put together a really good process for fairly, I think, and equitably choosing the, the people who will get those lots. Um, of course, I have a couple of last questions. I, I heard you say that, um, and I agree with this, that backup, you know, documentation is going to be required for some of the criteria that, you know, people are just going to write in. I, 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 if you haven't already found this, and I bet you have, I think it's going to be important for people to understand what specific documentation that you're looking for, for the particular categories.
Um, so for, for veterans, for example, that's everybody that's a veteran knows it's a DD two fourteen or equivalent. So something describes where, where they, uh, were enlisted at or where they departed at. So that, that's pretty straightforward. Residency, you know, how long have you owned a home within the community? Uh, that could be the, the registry of deeds or, uh, I think it's a primary, uh, source of that or some other, uh, town information or whether you rented. So that's, that's pretty clear. Um, whether you have a individual that is buried in a cemetery, the cemetery can commission can verify that for you, whether you're related to that person there. And I forget what the other one is there. I don't have the, uh, the list in front of me here.
Well, yeah.
It's things like that.
I'm comfortable that you have things. I think people who are filling out these applications also will need to know what those things are because, um, some of them, maybe not, some people will have on them. Others, like if we're talking about, uh, someone who's been born in Wyndham, you know, people may have to dig up a birth certificate or something like that. So. Going in advance, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, we'll put that down as, uh, an action from here for, you know, that will say that and if you have somebody buried in Wyndham Cemetery, we'll help you find that information. Where if you're a born resident, we'll go and seek out the birth certificate, which should be, uh, part of Trudy's stash downstairs there. Here's living residents. Um, I think we could probably even verify that too, because there's, um, residencies, um, Diane may know this, that goes back years on who lived in town and what street. So that's something that's all can be done at town hall there. Elected or appointed town official, um, that's available through the town reports. So all this information I think can be, uh, achieved or gathered at town hall.
I also think that I can add just a small asterisk and italics onto the application, just saying, uh, document, kind of listing out some of those documents that we talked about.
Yeah.
Just on the application. So it is, it's easy for people just to know exactly what they're, what they should be submitting.
Yeah, it, it's a good point. So we have a consistent input of the right information.
Yep.
Cuts down on the questions and phone calls and emails you get to about, well, so what do I need for this? Um, I, this is something I, I, that mentioned tonight that I probably should have asked earlier. It's just, um, I think an informational question. So if, um, members, more than one person in a family are making an application for a plot, um, they probably may or may not have a different, you know, ranking. Um, is there, and maybe I should know this, but is there any, I guess preference may be the right word. Um, for, for, if two people in a family would like a lot, is it likely that they would both get one or is it strictly by the points and you may get one, but your spouse may not? Just wondering.
I'm laughing because that was actually a question that, uh, an objective that we were kind of talking through at our meeting, um, this week. Because I think it's a very valid question. I think that that is something that, uh, we will kind of hear from folks. Um, the way that we determined, um, the application as of right now is that, uh, one application per person. So in that instance, a, a wife might have been living here or might be higher up on the point scale than her husband. Um, but I think we've determined that it's going to be one application per, per person and not a couple based point system. Um, and I think, Bill, I, if you want to chime in and add any other, um, color around why we came to that decision. I think it was based on making it's, it's simplifying the process for, for us. And then also, um, the full burial lots, I think we can, we've, we know that we can put at least four cremation, um, spaces in there if possible, if that's something that, uh, somebody gets, but. spaces in there if possible, if that's something that uh somebody gets, but um Bill, do you want to chime in and add any other details? I think I do think that's a, that is a very valid question, and I think that is something that we're going to have to.
So just to go back, it will be on a standalone basis. One application, one person, one set of points. It goes into the the rack and stack portion there, and we'll pick from that.
Yeah. Well, it does seem like the fairest thing. I think I I I think it it might um make me me personally think about putting in an application, um feeling like, well, may I I think I'll just wait until I can be sure I can be uh wherever I am buried alongside my husband. But that would be, that's you know, I think there there would be people in that situation, but the way you're doing it is really the only fair, fair.
Everybody applies to this, you know, it's just a, it's a good opportunity. Main Street's a very historic, interesting place there. And uh highly coveted among people, you know, that may have missed the opportunity in the past. So uh, yeah, apply, please apply.
Well, and the other thing is too, because there are only a handful of lots available, I think if we opened it up to just families or couples, it would really limit, and we want to be able to make this open and available to as many folks as possible. So um I think if we do one application per person, I think that allows that.
Okay, I just have one other small point uh relative to communications, and I think um it's very it it seems minor, but it's kind of important. Um relative to social media, it's great. You know, this is the way everybody, many people communicate. But please remember that we, that there's a Town of Wyndham official Town of Wyndham Facebook page.
Okay.
So if there's anything that is like this, that's going to be posted, the the community at large would, should, may think first of the Wyndham Facebook page, and then of course, it'll, you know, something will immediately get shared to a wonderful world of Wyndham or other places. So there's the website. But we do have a somewhat uh quiet right now um social media presence with, you know, Twitter, Instagram, and 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 our own Facebook page. So I'll just give you that information. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from Bill or Olivia or the board?
No, uh we're all set. Thank you very much.
Great. Good luck with this. We look forward to seeing how it turns out.
Well done. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um so the next um item on our agenda is a liquor license process, which Tom is going to take us through. And I think it won't be hard for you to figure out that um the reason we're doing this, having this, talking a bit about the process is there is a liquor license that um you know, was given up or I guess abandoned really um in town. That was at Grassy Roots, but they moved, and so their liquor license is uh open. And I believe that we have a pending, or not a pending, but uh someone who's interested in that particular liquor license in that same location. So this is a pre a prelude to what's to come, so at least we'll understand um the process of how it's been a while. We don't have that many of them. So Tom, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Through that. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you to the Cemetery Commission. That was very informative. Appreciate that. Um we were processing Grassy Roots uh which left last year down in the center of our community. There's a new applicant who's looking to have a retail wine and malt beverage license. This is a little different than what you would see in other communities, because Grassy Roots actually surrenders the license. It would not be a transfer. Uh so this has to begin as a new process. It's a new license for the applicant. I've been in touch with them. Uh the ABCC now has a new process where you actually apply online through them, and it comes to us. So I've informed her to go through the application process, gave her the um link to their website to apply through them, complete the application forms that will come to us. Once we receive it, uh then the board will schedule a public alcohol license hearing with all the proper notifications to a butters, newspaper, on a website. And then you will conduct the hearing. Uh the board will take any comments from the public and then make a determination if it's in the best interest of our community to have an all-retail license at that site. Once the board, if they give their approval, it goes back to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for further approval. So technically, even if the board does approve the license, they cannot open until the ABCC gives them final approval. They will probably meet with an inspector uh inspected facilities and such. It's a little easier than if you're doing a restaurant facility uh for the all-alcohol license. It should be relatively quickly on the local level. It's where the ABCC gets involved, where it does take somewhat somewhat longer. So we always tell applicants, just because the board approves it, you still cannot open until the ABCC uh approves the license.
Okay. Questions about the, oh, I'm sorry.
And you probably will be conducting this hearing uh sometime in early April, maybe after town meeting, because you have your posting requirements and such. Uh and more than likely, the new town administrator will be working way through this.
So Tom, I have a question that I think I need to ask, um although I understand that we have a very interested party, but this is actually um an open and available Wyndham liquor license, a particular liquor license. So we've received one application, and that's absolutely, you know, lots of great things about it. Um but technically, are we, are there, is anyone else eligible to apply for the same for this license?
Uh this license, originally she was speaking about being a common victor. This is not a common virtual. This is not a restaurant license. This is a retail. Um going back, technically, it's an open license. You are correct.
Um.
It's looking at the number of retail establishments that we have in this community. Uh I believe um I keep calling it by the wrong name, and I apologize, but the convenience store um has a retail alcohol, wine, wine and malt beverage license. I really don't believe that there's another opening in this community of a retail establishment that would qualify for that.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't accidentally um or inadvertently um denying some people an opportunity to apply if they so choose.
So can I, can I just um re-ask your question? Because I didn't, I didn't get the answer. I I'm a little bit confused. Anybody can be interested in this liquor license that want to use it at this location or not, right? They just need to apply.
Correct, yes.
Yes, so it, I guess, first come, first served, I guess, right?
I'm sorry, Diane.
So it would be whoever applies and gets through the A, is it ABCC, ABBC?
A.
Um whoever goes through that process first is the one that comes to us, I would assume.
I had it, I've had it done in the pet, one other community where um had just gone from being a dry community to a wet community and had um I believe two or three available. And they literally did it as a group setting. Everybody could apply uh by a deadline, and they listened to all the applicants and determined where would be the best places for those licenses. But that was a community of twenty-four thousand. They had numerous retail establishments that it could have gone into. Uh at this point, I believe you only had uh the one retail establishment out uh with the convenience store. I don't believe there's any other vacancy right now that could, that could handle it.
And we will have to clarify this or confirm this, but I don't, Diane, think it's a first come, first serve. I believe I've been, I've experienced a situation where there were actually two two entities, two businesses, that were both interested in a, not a common victor's license, but a, you know, a retail sales license. We had one license, and there were actually two businesses at that particular time. And I feel like based on, you know, criteria, et cetera, uh I feel like there were two applications, and we chose one. But it may just be that there were some conversations and one, you know, didn't move forward. So I just want, I I would have to, I'd have to ask Tom to clarify that.
Right, but so your original question was, so you have an application pending or someone interested? So someone else could pop up and say, oh, there's an open liquor license. Maybe I'll look into that, too. It's so it is sort of open. Is that, is that?
Yeah.
Was, yeah.
I think that was my original question, that um we may have someone who's very interested, but
That's great.
That doesn't preclude someone else who wants the same kind of license. And to Tom's point, there are not millions of options, but this is not you know, locked in at this point, but probably not.
Diane, you're absolutely correct. Technically, we do not have an application. Because once you get an application, then there's a whole process that you have to go through of timing for scheduling hearings. We have a letter of interest.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it is great. Uh anything else on that? If not, we will move to something that I'm also going to turn over to Tom, uh approval of the KP Joint Representation with Hamilton, slightly overdue, but um important document. Go ahead, Tom. Thank you.
Uh due to the fact that uh the Town of Hamilton and the Town of Wyndham have the same town council firm, uh and they are working with us and the Town of Hamilton on the shared services agreement for the assessing uh shared program. Uh the Select Board, as the executive body, needs to vote to approve that they do not have an issue with joint representation of the one or two between the two communities.
Any questions about that? I feel like it's come up before.
Yeah, so. I do, I thought, because I was confused on why there was just one attorney writing that letter that we're going to sign. But it it's obviously because it's KP, but it wasn't like our attorney. Right? So I questioned Tom on that. And the other question was, I thought it said uh council on aging as well as assay uh assessing services, but I don't see council on aging in the motion. Did that change?
No, you uh you, for each particular case, you have to do a separate vote.
Oh, okay.
In this case, it's just for this.
Assessing.
Matter. And this way, it keeps coming back to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
The letter, uh, yeah, okay. Other questions about this? If not, take a motion, I think.
All right, move that the Wyndham Select Board authorized joint legal representation with the Town of Hamilton in the matter of shared assessing services.
I second that.
Okay, assuming no further discussion. Yell out if there is. Um we'll go for a vote. Uh Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. This would be, I don't know how you say no to this. Um actually, I guess it would require, if we did not want to have this joint representation on this particular issue, I guess we'd have to find a different council. So um good that we have agreement on that. Okay, um, old business. So um if I may, just, if people don't remember wh- why this is even here, uh I'll just give a little background. Many months ago, I think it was October or November, the board, this board um sat down with our then TA and um made comments and jointly and, you know, in a meeting on on the TA job description that had been that was originally um written and approved in two thousand and fourteen. I made notes. Um I didn't promise when I'd have that ready, but a few things intruded in between. So what we have in our packets is first a red line and then a clean copy. Um and to the best of my ability or knowledge or my notes, the changes that have been um recommended on this document are based solely on the recommendations that came out of that meeting. So there, it's this board's recommendations. Um I also showed it to um to Tom to see if he had anything. So I guess at this point, and I do have one area I want to ask about, but at this point, I just, I guess we should talk about whether um it looks as if people remember the changes that we made are are reflected in the document and are changes that we still um wish to make. So if there's anything that you think we should do differently, now's the time. It seems like it would be, since we're hunting for a new town administrator, we should have a up-to-date uh job description. So Gary or Diane, is there anything in this red line copy that you think should be different?
Want to go first, Diane?
I um, when I read through it, I can't do it now because I'm on the iPad. Um it it felt like it's what we discussed, so I I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Okay.
Can we uh, are we able to uh present the pages, Michelle? I was looking at three, three point O.
Yeah, we should have, I think we should have us. Three point O. I think I see, I think I know what you're going to say.
Excuse me, do you want to see the one with the edit, the red line one?
Is that the one you want, the red line one?
So that'd be easier, yeah.
No, it didn't come up.
It didn't come up yet. Your, your file name. There it is. Okay, so you said section three point O, Gary?
Yes.
So can you scroll down a bit, a little bit? That's section two, there. Section three. Okay, take it away, Gary.
Yeah, so my question was the um, there's now talking about the town moderator in the uh the second paragraph of the second, well, now the first dot, says the town administrator's appointment authority does not extend to non-employees appointed to committees or other positions by the Select Board or to the town moderator. Should that not be appointed by the town moderator as in the uh town meeting? What are we applying there?
I think that's right. I think this was um the the only uh I think example that we have of an appointment that's not made by the Select Board is the Finance Committee, which includes the town moderator in the appointing group. So I do think that's right. I think that should say um positions by the Select Board or by the town moderator.
Right.
Got it. Got it. Um I'm noticing something on that, too, Gary, if you don't mind, because it's on the same page. I'm not cutting you off. But I, we we said that we were going to outline, and I'm looking at the comment that was on here, that we were going to name specifically the positions that the Select Board, that the TA makes and the ones that are made that he he or she recommends to the Select Board or the ones that the town administrator makes uh themselves directly. I don't, I didn't include that here. I think what we said was, and I don't know why I didn't say that. I think that we said um that the TA is responsible for the hiring, an appointment of any uh employee below the level of department head, and that the department head slash directors um the the TA would probably still run the process, but a recommendation would need to be made, and the appointment actually made by the uh Select Board with a few statutory exceptions like the uh we just just did a treasurer collector that had to be made by the Select Board. So we were going to list that. Uh and I'm happy to.
I think it'd be, you know, going forward, a lot clearer if we did list exactly who does what, whether it's uh
Okay.
where the department uh recommendation is, or if there's specific ones like town collector that the Select Board has to do.
Right.
Have all the information in one spot.
Right, because that does sometimes, okay. So I Right, because that does sometimes, okay, so I meant to do that, okay, Gary, I'm sorry, I interrupted your comments, did you have more?
No, uh, can we scroll down to nine point O? So the, uh, administrator is responsible for the use and maintenance of all town land and buildings, other than the school committee. And, uh, my question is, um. Does this, uh, exclude properties overseen by commissions such as the water commission, cemetery commission?
I.
So, so it gets down, who's, who's responsible for the pump house?
Well, I think ultimately, I mean, these are kind of ultimate, the buck stops here. Um, I think the town administrator is responsible, the, you know, the front line, for instance, the pump house might be the DPW and the water department, but, um. Operationally beyond that, I think the town administrator has this kind of overarching. Facilities maintenance responsibilities, even though not direct reporting, at least that's the way I understand it.
My other, uh, yeah, so just check on that, my other idea there is besides land and buildings. Um, and I don't see another place, where are we going to put, uh, information technology, you know, computers and. All the wires and stuff, should that be, uh, land, buildings and, uh, equipment or?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know anywhere else that that would make sense.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, it could be added to that section. Um, I'm, I just read this the other day, but on that same section too, Gary, it says. Uh, means all town land and buildings, other than those under the control of the school committee and the library trustees. Uh, I'm gonna have to follow up on that too, because I thought that ultimately through the DPW and the facilities director. Wenham has responsibility for the library building, so I don't. I miss that library trustees part.
Yeah, because we're, it gets tricky because it's one of the, the joint shared services, so, uh, auto check on that.
Right. See, every time you look at it, okay, did you have anything else, Gary?
Um. Down to thirteen, still there, so, um, we changed the wording from approves to reviews and signs. So, you know.
Right.
Who, who actually, uh, has approval authority on the payroll? Is that select board ultimately when our signatures? And we're just saying that TA just reviews it.
Well, so that, so help us out here, Tom, because those payroll warrants are signed by Tom. They're signed by the finance director and they're signed by the select board. So, and maybe, is there, and the individual, you know, supervisor. So who would you say, um, Tom is the, the, who's the, what did we call it?
Approval authority?
Approval authority, yeah, of, of all those people that's on payroll and AP warrants.
Um, I've always, since I've been here, the two times I've been here, um, I've been signing payroll warrants. Since right now, right, and right now they're doing it also electronically.
But who's the final, who's the final approval? We all sign it and review it, but who is actually the final approval?
Well, they can't pay out the payroll technically, legally, they can't, the payroll cannot be paid until that was, that warrant is signed by a majority of the select board. And Jamie agrees with me.
I think it was select board too.
So I think it is the select board, and is that not what?
That is what.
Yeah, that's what it's.
Okay, okay, it was sounding very familiar, so I was thinking that we had researched that before. Okay. Anything else, Gary?
No, I think those are the little bits.
So I, I'll, I noted those, and I guess we'll have to do one more revision, but I, there was also something else that was either absent in my notes or we didn't discuss completely.
Oh, yes, on eleven here.
Well, it's, uh, eleven, I think is fine, actually, I don't think that the, the, um, town administrator. Transfers funds, I think that's really under the purview of the finance department, but the budget, section ten. We pretty much didn't, um, acknowledge any responsibility that the TA has for the budget. And that doesn't seem right. So, not sure where we left off with that. Anybody? Barry, do you have a thought on that?
Well, I think perhaps, uh, we can shorten it down to, uh, some variation of just the first sentence. Because certainly, long term, the, uh, the town administrator is gonna be the one person that has the most insight. Not only how the last budget's going, but what really needs to be formulated to the next one.
Okay, I guess where I had an issue or a question, I should say, not really issue. Um, I'm sorry, this is really small, even on my iPad, my huge iPad. It says something here about, so yes, the town administrator does, you know, provide a budget, um, to this, not really to the select board, but. At the select board's direction to the finance committee, but, um, it says here. The finance director shall provide the town administrator with such support as needed in preparing the budgets required under this section. I don't know, Jamie, yeah, feels about this, but it seems to me as if in the budget process, the finance director has a larger. Role and the authority than just support as needed in preparation of the budget. Um, I feel like it's done in collaboration with the town administrator, even though. You know, it, when it comes, when it's done, it's called the administrator's budget, but that feels like it, somewhere it's in collaboration with. Does that, people agree with that?
The, is, is, can we ask Jamie to pipe in, or we, are we discussing it ourselves?
Uh, Jamie is piping in, which is fine with me if it's fine with you guys. Um, she says, I think it's technically the TA's budget, that's true, it is.
I already think, yes, I think it's technically the TA's budget, but we do work in collaboration. And while I do take most of her responsibilities, uh, it's almost like really his budget, I'm, I'm behind the scenes doing the stuff.
Okay, so are you comfortable with support as needed, or do you prefer in collaboration with? I mean, I honestly, this is your job, so.
I think in collaboration with, because we'll, we're definitely, we're, the two of us would be the budget team, so I think it's more appropriate.
So perhaps we could just insert that, the town administrator, comma, in collaboration with the finance director, comma, prepares and presents, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, I will, I can make that change. So, um. I can make these last changes, um, print, send out another clean copy and we can approve it at our next meeting? Good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, all right, so we'll. I think I have good notes on that, and, uh, yeah, I'll send it out beforehand, so, um, so if, um. If you have comments on this, or when I send, I will send my up next version to Tom. Um, if you have any individual comments that you'd like to be brought to our next meeting, you can feel free to mention them to Tom, especially if they're. Significant wording changes, otherwise we'll just do it, um, on the fly at, at our next meeting. Um. There's an interesting, we have an interesting phenomenon with the, with these meetings, which I'm gonna leave the next select board to sort of figure out. Um, so we do have a question in the chat, and it is a really good question, um, where can someone find this information? W- we have historically, once, um, just before the meeting, so this packet becomes available. You know, a few days ago, but just before the meetings, these packets have traditionally been posted on the website. Um, under, you know, agendas, so, um. N- normally, although I will say we're a little bit behind, normally if you wanted to find this, uh, you know, what we're following, the backup, it would be on the website. Um, it brings me to something that I, I guess I'll, I'll say to the board, uh, I guess I can do this in my parting moments. This, uh, I don't know how long we'll be doing Zoom, uh, and I don't know what, even after we're doing in-person meetings, we'll have the ability to do hybrids. The chat function is really useful, but, um, I've noticed that it's really hard. To keep track of what people are saying in the chat and respond to it in, in real time. Um, so I'm going to suggest that folks try to think about, uh, we want to be responsive and we want to answer the questions that are in the chat, but if we had a live meeting. We wouldn't be taking questions throughout the meeting, um, from the audience, so to speak, so. There are important questions, but I think we need to figure out a way to capture them, whether it be please asking people to write an, uh, you know, email right after, which. A constituent did last, last week, which was very helpful, um, but it's hard to do that on the fly. Um, I hear from Michelle that these packets, this packet is posted on the website. So if you go to the agenda page, um, it should say agenda and then packet and then eventually minutes, so you'll be able to see, um. You'll be able to see this actual document that we're talking about. Okay, so I put a clean version in there, if that, in case that was easier for people to see, but since we've changed it, I don't think we have to spend too much time on that. Um, and I'll bring that back at our next week. So. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a few things having to do with the TA search. Um, but they begin with, um, voting for finalists to be interviewed by the select board. So for the public, the select board has received the names of, um, of. The candidates that, um, and resumes of the candidates that Tom believes as our. Search consultant, um, should be finalists, and by process, I think that we, this is not our, our, our time to. Um, deliberate on these finalists, but literally to, um, vote them in as. Tom inserts the names, which he would have to do now because we didn't want to do it before the meeting. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
So if it's okay, we'll ask Tom to make this motion, inserting the names.
Right, um, ma'am chair, if you would like, um, the four candidates, and I know, um, Michelle's gonna be putting their names up on the board. Uh, would you like me to just briefly for the audience, go through the four individuals and give their municipal experience and such?
Sure, and then if, then we can have, um, if, if Gary's comfortable and has the names handy, he can make the motion. After you've done that. Okay, that's great, thank you, Tom. We'll wait for the reveal here.
Okay, uh, feel like the Oscars.
Hopefully our candidates think that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, your other four candidates, also known as the beginning of the Tom Younger farewell tour. But, um, the four finalists, these are alphabetical, and I will put on their. Most recent municipal job, I'll go specifically through each of them and what their experiences are, such. The first one is Steve Polus, who is currently the Director of Finance for the Town of Marblehead. His municipal experience is he was an associate assessor in the town of Bedford. Uh, he was the deputy director of finance in the town of Danvers. And since January of two thousand twenty-one, he's been a director of finance in Marblehead. Uh, his education is he has a bachelor's and a master's in public administration. Uh, he is an accredited assessor and he also is a certified, uh, public purchasing officer. Uh, the next candidate is Tanya Shalom, who was just recently the former Middleton Assistant Town Administrator. She is currently an associate with the Collins Center, uh, for Public Management. Uh, her education experience is she has a bachelor's in sociology, she is a lawyer, she has a Juris Doctorate. Uh, she's a PhD candidate for a public policy. Her municipal experiences, she was assistant town administrator in Human Resources Director for the town of Middleton. Uh, she was also an assistant district attorney in Maine. And on boards and committee memberships, she is currently the chair of the Traffic and Parking Commission in Salem. Uh, she's a member of the Policy Committee on Municipal and Regional Administration of the Mass Municipal Association. And she's a member of the Technology Committee for the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resources, uh, Committee. A third candidate, uh, and also a, a local candidate also, is Jason Silva, who up until, um. January, uh, he's net, was the Marblehead Town Administrator. His municipal experience was he's been a town administrator in Marblehead. From June of eight, two thousand eighteen till February of this year. He was also chief of staff, uh, for Senator Lovely in the Mass State Senate. He was director of municipal operations for, uh, about a year and a quarter for the city of Salem. He was a city councillor at large for six years in Beverly. Uh, and his other municipal experience was also with Salem as chief of staff for almost about seven years for Mayor Driscoll. He has a bachelor's degree in political science, uh, masters in public administration, and is also a certified purchasing municipal officer. Uh, final candidate, uh, but not last, Fred Ventresco, who is the former Milan Missouri City Administrator. He has approximately about maybe fifteen or so years as a town administrator. In various communities of sizes of between like one thousand and four thousand. Uh, his Massachusetts experience was he was a town administrator. For almost two years in the town of Sandersfield in the Berkshires. His other experience is in small communities in New Hampshire, uh, in Maine. He has a bachelor's degree in public management, masters in public administration. Uh, and he's been a full member in various, uh, management associations, uh, in the states that he's been at. So those are the four candidates, we originally received twenty-three applicants, these are the four most qualified. And I wish them the best, and I thank the board for having confidence in me and bringing them forward, uh, to the board.
Tom, thank you very much for all the work I'm sure that you did, um, to find us what appear to be four qualified candidates. Um, so we will, I guess at this point, without discussion, uh, yet, we'll take a motion, Gary.
All right, do we have the motion slide up or?
Uh, I think it's, hmm, we have on a motion slide, it's in the, it's in the PowerPoint. Michelle probably can get back to it. There, there you go.
Move that the Wenham Select Board named the following as finalists to be interviewed by the Town Administrator Search. That's Jason Selvia, Tanya Shalup, Steve Polus, and Fred Ventresco.
I second that.
Okay, and by, to preserve everyone's privacy, we'll go right to a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. And so we have unanimous for those four, um, finalists, uh, that we will be interviewing, and again, thanks to. Congratulations to the four of you, I'm presuming, Tom, you will contact them, um, and let them know?
I will contact them this evening after the meeting by email, so that they're not waiting by the phone. For a phone call.
Right, which we sure hope they are. Okay, so that, that's a really important step in this process, and I'm excited that we're there. Um, but we need to discuss a few other things. The next, so the timeline, and I think at this point, it's really the timeline for, um, interviews and. Actually choosing someone, um. I, well, there's a first, a question first, so we have four finalists. Do we wish to choo- to interview these people all in one day? Or would we like to split them up? I wouldn't recommend more than two days, but we could do two on one evening or day and two on the other. Anyone have an opinion on that?
I like the one day, all four.
Okay, Gary?
Yes, I think, do them all in one day, it'd be fairer, and, uh, will get the job done for us unless there's some extraordinary circumstance where one of them. Can't make a particular day, maybe a scheduling challenge, but let's go for one day.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it, from this point on, it's kind of a, I said this, um, recently to someone, it's kind of a race. Um, where these people are probably or possibly all looking for other jobs, and if we can interview them all together, it will be quicker and. Um, where these people are probably or possibly all looking for other jobs. If we can interview them all together, it will be quicker and fairer. So that being said, all in one day, um, the first date that we, and I think that these are. I'm making the assumption that these are Zoom interviews. Uh, especially since I don't know if the candidate who, whose last job was in Missouri, lives in Missouri, but that one would certainly have to be Zoom. And then it just always only seems fair to, to do these that way. Um, that being said, we get to pick a date and I'll, I'll, I actually have a. I printed a calendar because you know how good I am with names, with dates. So the first, I guess, real opportunity and I. Uh, I don't know people's availability or if this is something that's interesting to people, but I was thinking about the fact that, um, Diane. Typically doesn't have work on Fridays. Um, so our first opportunity, um, would, would be Friday, this Friday, assuming, well. I, assuming it can be scheduled, of course, that people will be able to, to make their time available. These are one out. Typically like forty-five minute interviews, an hour apart. I think that's what we've been doing. Um, so we could technically do them on Friday, start in the afternoon or the morning or anytime we want. One hour apart, one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, that's Friday, the eighteenth. So maybe we should just go through a couple of dates and see if, if that works. You know, like Diane, you had some consideration there. So we'll start with you. Does that?
Thank you. Yeah, no, that works out great for me anytime on, on a Friday, especially this Friday. I don't have any doctor's appointments or anything, so.
Okay, Gary, does that?
Friday is good here.
Okay, all right, that, that'd be great. Um, I think it's, I think since it's Friday, we're flexible, so Tom. It's kind of up to their schedules if you can find four hour block, that they're all available in a row. Um, and I would say anytime, I think probably no, no later than the last one. Three or three ideally or four o'clock on Friday. Um, but we'll sort of, you let us know when that is and, but we'll block out Friday for now.
We're looking at this Friday, correct?
This Friday, the eighteenth.
Just for, um, we do need to post that, so it's.
Oh, okay. Right, that's right.
That should work because we can post forty-eight hours. Um, if we're doing something that's noon to four or something like that, we have time, uh. I will put that in when I contact the candidates this evening by email. I will also notify that we would like to schedule you for a Friday afternoon Zoom interview. Uh, and please get back to me no later than eleven AM tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great.
The three candidates from Massachusetts understand the whole posting issue, so.
Right, right. Um, and I think that, um, I always worry when we get into this stage of, of the search. Um, these candidates are, as we've seen, highly qualified and could very well be in other searches. Um, so that's why I feel like we need to get to them first before someone drops out and our pool gets smaller.
Should we, uh, should we make an alternate date just in case, you know, we can't get all four on the eighteenth, you know? Does Saturday work for either of you guys? Because that could work well for me as well.
Would be okay with me.
Same here, good.
Uh, it's Tom's day off.
Right, I know.
We try to get, we try to give him days off, but. Uh, how, how, how's your availability on, on Saturday, Tom?
Uh.
Or actually the availability.
I'll give Friday is the primary. I know Saturday, I'm around.
Okay. Okay, I think Friday would be preferable, um, and of course, we're going to need someone who can run the Zoom. So assuming that they're Friday or Saturday, let's just contemplate moving forward a little bit. We talked about, um. Having these folks meet one-on-one with the, uh, department heads, which again, could also be done in, in one day. Which could be. You know, Monday. Um, and I, and the reason I'm looking about that is because I'm thinking we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, a regular select board meeting. But I would recommend, and I don't even recommend, I have a thought that perhaps the, um, deliberation and vote. For who we appoint should not happen in conjunction with a regular meeting, so we don't feel any kind of time pressure. So like, you know, if we met on Tuesday and we could do the appointments on either Wednesday or Thursday. Um, what do folks think about that?
Uh, Madam Chair, one thing, and I know we are trying to expedite this, um. No, no, that works. I'm sorry. That works. I was just thinking of something else.
Okay. It's, we're just, you know, trying to get it in advance so that we can be sure that we post everything. We don't have, we're not involved with the department head. Part at all, nor does it require any posting, so it's really, and we will have a posted select, well, we will have a posted meeting on Tuesday night, the twenty-second. Um, so the question is, do we want to be prepared to, um, that week? Tuesday or Wednesday, we could flop it, to have a deliberation and a vote. We have a little time to change this if we want to, but looking out from, from now.
Sorry, the only thing about going on Tuesday, if you're doing the department heads, meeting with them on Monday, if we continue with that. That really doesn't give me time, give me that much time to get their comments to the board, to be concerned.
Good point. So we could have a regular select board meeting, but I know that we have some agenda items coming up. On Tuesday and perhaps if the board is willing to have a one, one agenda meeting, um, either. Wednesday or Thursday of next week for the appointment, giving Tom a little more time to. Put together the comments from the department heads. Does that work?
I'm flexible here and I think it's important to, um, you know, make sure that the department heads. And the candidates meet at some point, but I think Tom's going to have to do a lot of bit of scheduling there. To work around everybody's schedule, so I think, uh, you know, Tuesday. Get the other business done and then as soon as Tom gets back to us, Wednesday, Thursday, next Friday, whatever.
Yeah, uh, the one thing, then, Madam Chair regarding me is when you brought me back. I did say that, that Thursday and Friday, I was going to be out of state and I can't change.
Yep.
That's fine. So we'll, we'll try for, um, you know, Tuesday, well, prob, I think it does make sense. To Gary's point to have our regular meeting on Tuesday, uh, and give you and everybody else a little more time, but maybe we can shoot for a meeting on Wednesday.
So, if I could also say that, um, the interviews will be published, will be. Public, so the public can also reach out to us through emails and et cetera, so we get their feedback as well. Um, and so I know Tom won't be here on Thursday, but I was hoping to push it one more day till that Thursday, but if we need Tom, we'll have to do it on Wednesday.
And the other thing, Ma- Madam Chair, you had mentioned, uh, currently to my knowledge. We are not in competition on a timeline. I mean, I follow this closely like following, uh, baseball games. Uh, there are no other. Selections in the next two to three weeks, to my knowledge, for any communities.
We, I know of one other search in the general area, but it is, is a little bit behind us. So unless there's someone here who's holding out because they know there's another search, um, you're, I, I hear you, there's no. Uh, no one that's going to be a finalist probably in two places. So, um. Do, shall we see, so if, if we were going to meet on Wednesday, we wouldn't have to post until Monday. So we can give this Monday, the twenty-first, to meet on Wednesday, the twenty-third. Uh, I think I have that right. So we can give this a little bit of time, we can actually. We can, you know, send some emails back and forth, well, just relative to scheduling. And then publicize which day that is going to be. Does that, that work?
Yeah.
The rest of the timeline kind of fall, falls from that. Okay, so I have, just so that I'm sure, I have, um, that we need to post. Tomorrow for interviews, hopefully on Friday, uh, in the afternoon. And, um, meeting with department heads to be scheduled for Monday, the twenty-first. Uh, select board meeting on the twenty-second, the regular agenda and. Hopefully, um, the ability to deliberate and, and actually appoint someone, um, pending, you know. Negotiations and background checks and all that on, uh, preferably Wednesday. Possibly Thursday if we can, if we can do that without Tom. Is that what everyone else has?
Okay, yes, can I throw out, um, just because it seems like my schedule is the one that's always a problem. So depending on these candidates, if Friday doesn't work and we can't make Saturday. If I could also suggest if we did a late afternoon into evening on Monday, I can be available for that if we need to push it there. I'll be traveling home, um, Monday, I'll be home by three, so I could do late afternoon to the evening if we can squeeze in four then if need be. Just giving you more options.
So we'll keep Tom busy with trying to figure that out. Okay. I think we've got that generally done. Now I've lost my agenda, so that's timeline. Oh, I'm sorry, I looked down for a second. Yes, Tom?
Okay, one last on scheduling, um, regarding with department heads. Um, obviously with Mr. Ventresco is from Missouri, that would have to be Zoom meetings with the department heads. Uh, the other three individuals are all local. Uh, when I've done it the one time individually, this was years ago, but met with each department head for twenty-five minutes, a half hour. One-on-one, uh, would you recommend it be all, I would recommend that they would meet those three personally. Because it just makes the flow a little easier than setting up Zooms for everyone. I, you know.
Uh, I'm okay with that with it for staff, staff on staff, meeting if that makes it more efficient.
Sure.
Okay, fine. It just makes it easier because you're just like, it's a bad term, it's like speed dating. It's that you actually move them around and they shift around. It's much easier doing that than trying to coordinate it all through Zoom.
Um, and to Diane's point, which I, I really like to make again, w- we will try to. We will certainly announce and try to formalize some kind of an, uh, availability of input from the public. Um, we did that last year, last time, maybe it was last year. Um, we actually dedicated phone numbers. I don't think we still have that ability, but certainly we would want if, if any, after the interviews, if anyone has any. Um, or before comments or that they'd like to reach out to us individually about. We, we should figure out a way to, uh, make sure that that hap, that can happen.
Our emails are all on the website, right?
Right.
They can always reach out by email, though my emails. People always seem to have a hard time with my email.
Yeah, I actually think I've sent a couple of emails with, that you haven't gotten from me. The last time I emailed you with these dates, I think, or some dates, um, I noticed that. It bounced back and then I realized it didn't come up, your correct email didn't come up first. So if we, when we announce this, we'll, we should probably, you know, have our names.
The emails.
And post the email addresses.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we each received, uh, separately a list of, um. You know, potential questions. These are the interview questions that would be asked of all of the candidates. Um, and I think Tom had asked us to, you know, give some preferences, so. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to do anything with the questions, Tom, but, um. Interview, interview questions are the next item on the agenda.
Right, I just got the last group of them, uh, late this afternoon, so what I can do. Is the three of them that we have, as we did before for when you interviewed Ryan, I can group them together and say these. Are the majority questions and get it out to the board before you do your interviews.
I, I think that we've typically had the ability to ask six to eight questions.
That's correct.
Um, does that seem right in that forty-five minutes? Sometimes that seems like a very long forty-five minutes and sometimes. It doesn't seem like enough time, but, okay, so you'll get the, the questions that we, the, the six or eight questions that we have in common the most. Out to us. Um, how, how shall we handle the questions that are sort of, uh, specific to the candidate? In reading these resumes, I, you know, I can think of one or two questions that I would like to ask, but might only be pertinent to a particular candidate. Is there a way that we can incorporate that, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I mean, each of you may have your own individual questions based on, on that candidate. Um. You could just when, uh, if you're doing them by. You know, if you're just doing like Gary does the first question, Catherine, then Diane, or you're going to do. You know, all of Diane's questions or all of Gary's questions at one grouping. Generally, just, I would just make a note of that and saying, you know, you know, Diane is specifically interested in. How did you handle the HR function in Middleton, uh, or. Gary maybe about how you were handling the assessing function when you were an assessor. Those are specific, you can just add those to your question list.
Okay, so we'll have a group of questions that it seems to make sense that we don't identify people with those questions. Those are just questions that the. Generally are being asked, but we could ask them in, you know, rotate through them. And then at the end of that, assuming, hopefully, there'll be a little time for each of us maybe to circle back and each ask a specific question of a specific candidate. Just go through that, uh, if, as we have time. Make sense?
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, I can't believe we got through that. This is, um. This is great. I'm, I'm, I'm really excited, uh, and I don't mean I'm excited because Tom's potentially leaving. And, and by the way, it's typical from lest we think he's leaving too quickly. I, I think that it's fair to say, depending on what each of these, whichever candidate we choose, what they have to give for a, you know, notice. Which could vary depending on the candidate, um, there's still three to four weeks. Of background checking and negotiations that seems to be typical between the time that we choose someone and the time that they sign a contract. Um, so, you know, it's.
So you're not going anywhere fast, huh?
Yeah, that's okay, lest Tom thinks he's le- leaving next week. I don't think so. Okay, um.
Police sign you're on the office.
Yeah. So, okay, so we're, we're on to our last item of business. Other matters as may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair. I don't have anything that I can think of. Is there, um, are there any other items that Gary or Diane? We need to bring up or, um, talk about it all?
No, I think just review the schedule, so it's, uh, Friday, the eighteenth.
Yeah.
And, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the, uh. They warrant hearing on the twenty-eighth and our regular meeting on the twenty-ninth, town meeting on the second. That sounds good.
Got it. That's a lot of meetings, but you got them. Okay.
So we, will we have, will we have one in April? Will we have it the April fourth or are we going to take a week? What do we normally do?
No, we normally have that April fourth meeting. That would be.
First and third, yeah.
The first, yeah, yeah. Um, and it's just, there always seems to be one meeting between the town meeting and the.
Right, and that would be.
And the elections.
Last one.
That'll be my last meeting, yeah. Um, also, we, we normally, uh, I think it's probably a good idea. We normally post a meeting on Saturday of town meeting day. Um, just an hour before the meeting starts in case there are any last minute issues, right? So remember before the town meeting that we need to post a meeting at say noon. Uh, for the select board and sometimes we've done it jointly with the FinCom, is that right?
I think so.
So, yes.
Crowded into a room of buker.
Yeah, they usually, everyone I remember posted separately, but you kind of all make, you know.
Right. Okay, so Tom and I will make sure that we coordinate that. Okay, anything else? If not, I will take, oh, my computer just went weird again. I know you guys are still there. I will take a motion from Diane.
Oh, yes, a motion to adjourn at eight nineteen PM.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned and not for long. See you all soon.
Very much, buddy.
Take care, everybody.